Well, good evening. Being seven o'clock, I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 22nd, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Everyone, please rise and take the pleasures of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with roll call on my right. Barbara here.
Kimzie here.
Limmer here.
Mater here. Lovella here.
Freeman here.
Austin here.
Cormis present. Well, now moving to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. There any items any members of the Planning Commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any items any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion by Freeman with a second by Lovella that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving into new business item number one, Z-15-07, PDP-15-03. Hold a public hearing and consider rezoning for approximately 22 acres of land from M1 Restricted Industrial District to RP2 Plan Two Family District and associated preliminary development plan for Moonlight Park located at the northeast corner of South Moonlight Road and Woodson Lane. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
Yes, we do.
Great.
Chad Barr, Planner One, to present this particular agenda item. The subject property, as you said, is the 22 acres. It consists of 10 of the 11 lots of the original Moonlight Business Center III, which was a subdivision that was recorded back in 2003. The subject property, as you said, is the M-1 zoning. That was zoning that was established in 1997. All of the lots except one are part of the particular rezoning application. Lot one is excluded from that recorded subdivision. Or, excuse me, is excluded from the application, excuse me. And what I'll do is I'll start with the particular screen that's up and go in a clockwise manner explaining the existing zoning and land uses that surround the property. So, beginning north of the property is an area of agricultural zoning. It's a small parcel with a single-family residence on it. Then moving to the east, which is northeast of the subject property, is an area that's zoned RP-3, which is the planned garden apartment zoning district. And it's a mixture of multiple-family type dwelling uses. Moving east and southeast of the subject property is the Interstate 31, I-35. It has agricultural zoning. Beyond that, it's not inside the notification area as required by statute, but beyond that area is unincorporated Johnson County, which is the RUR, the Rural Agricultural Type zoning District that they have. Moving south of the property, there is more M1, M-1 zoning, which is not part of the application. Then there's also some right-of-way for part of Moonlight Road and the interstate. To the southwest portion of the area is zoning at CO-A, which is the Neighborhood Business District type zoning. It's currently undeveloped. And then on the west side of the development area is R-2, which is the twin family, which is kind of requested in the planned form for the application area, but it's, this here is just the regular unplanned R-2 that allows for duplexes and also single-family residential uses as well. Moving on, this particular slide shows an excerpt from the 2014 Cities Comprehensive Plan. This here shows a portion of the future land use map. There's three colors here in the key. The yellow color to the north of the subject property is the low-density residential designated area, which allows for like, single-family development. The parcel itself has this orange color, which is the medium-density residential type of land use designation, as well as the land use designation to the west of the subject property and then also to the northeast. And this allows for duplex-type development. And then the white area on this particular map is road right-of-way. That R-O-W stands for right-of-way. To the lower right-hand corner, you'll see that big blue strip and then the green with the hashing there, if you will. That's actually the border of the southeast planning area, which is a planning area as designated in the plan. I just don't have that keyed here on this particular slide. This is an aerial photograph of the area. Subject parcels are bounded by the bright red border. You can see the individual lots of that Moonlight Business Center Number Three subdivision. You can see the lots, it's lots two through 11. Now, a series of field photos of the area. This one here is looking northeast towards the subject property from Moonlight Road. The road kind of in the center of the screen is South Creekside Drive, which is part of the Moonlight Business Center Three subdivision. This one here is looking away from the subject property, looking to the northwest from Creekside Drive, shows that small agricultural area with the single-family development and then single-family homes beyond on the other side of Moonlight Road. This is looking south down South Creekside Drive. You notice some of the infrastructure that's already in place, the road, fire hydrant there on the left, the driveway apron that you see on the right-hand side, that's part of that Lot One development that was developed back in 2004. This is another slide looking south. This one is looking at the drainage channel, which was part of the improvements that were made of the Moonlight Business Center Three subdivision. Continuing on, this is also looking south, but this is down Stone Creek Drive. The subject property is both on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side of the road itself. And then if you look towards the background, you'll see Interstate 135 and then an existing sanitary lift station there. And the last slide is looking north from Stone Creek Drive. This is showing the Cottage Park West subdivision where I'd mentioned earlier, some of that multifamily housing that exists. Comments and/or correspondence? On this slide, if we'd had any comments or correspondence during the processing of the case, I'd put it and kind of paraphrase it here. We didn't have any, either dissension or people in support. We had a few phone calls after the property notices went out, kind of asking for more information about what they received in the mail, but there was nothing that was, where people stated they were actually against the request or for it. In this next slide, these would be tied together. If that would be within that notification area, you'd see that designated either with a green plus sign if they were in support of the application, or a red X in opposition. Since there was none of that, this slide is left blank. Moving on, staff facts or findings on Z-15-07. Number one, all 10 parcels are a part of the Moonlight Business Center Three subdivision, which is recorded back in 2003. Number two, the Gardner 2014 Comprehensive Plan calls for medium residential land uses, which is, which is the request basically with the RP-2, which is the planned two-family type zoning classification. Moving on to number three, the same comprehensive plan on page 42 calls for a range of housing options within the city. More specifically, objective seven of said plan calls for new residential development to be sited close to schools and parks. And this leads to number four here. Item number four, the subject property is within 1,000 feet of the Moonlight Elementary School. Moving on, number five, said plan on page 17 identifies South Moonlight Road as a minor arterial road and Woodson Lane as a major collector. Number six, page 61 of the plan identifies the subject property as a new growth area for the community. Number seven, pages 89 and 105 of the plan also identifies the east side of Moonlight Road and the south side of East Grand Street as a location for a future bike and pedestrian trail, helping to connect all parts of the city with each other. And then number eight, the maximum density that could be presented here, given the 22 acres under application, is 191 units. And that's with the R-2 type zoning, which with that carries at least a 5,000 square foot minimum parcel size for duplexes. But what's proposed is 84 units, which gives a density per the applicant of 3.86 units per acre. We'll see more of that discussion here just in a bit, under the preliminary development plan. So, staff, taking the balance of the 12 factors as enumerated in the zoning ordinance for the city, recommends the Planning Commission forward the request to rezone the 22.01 acres from the M-1 Restricted Industrial District to the RP-2 Planned Two Family District located generally southeast of the intersection of South Moonlight Road and south of Woodson Lane to the governing body with a recommendation for approval. I'll continue then with preliminary development plan 15-03. What you see here on this particular slide is a depiction of what, or how the developer's wanting to lay out this particular development. And I'll kind of go around and point out some of the features kind of in the same clockwise manner as I did earlier. You'll see Woodson Lane up on the north side. And then you'll see kind of in the center, going north and south, a little bit of angle there, is that, what we saw in that earlier slide, of that concrete flume or drainage area improvement, which was done with the previous development. Then you see Stone Creek Drive, which is in existence. And then you see the existing sanitary lift station. Here it's denoted by the, like, the yellow or gold-colored circle. You see Interstate I-35 to the south and southeast. Then there's a, in the center of the portion, but more towards the south, there's a drainage retention area. This is where the ground naturally slopes and is designed in this particular layout that the water would flow down that existing flume, that drainage flume into that drainage area, retain there, and then have slow outlet underneath the interstate to the southeast. You see Creekside Drive, which is existing. Saw that in an earlier slide. And then there's several features here that are worthy of pointing out on the west side of the development. One, it's not shown here, well, it's shown, but it's not, oh, I didn't put a color to it, if you will, is that there's a 15-foot wide landscape easement. Now, this is a requirement because of, Moonlight Road is designated as an arterial street within the city's plan, and therefore, when development occurs, then this landscape easement is required. And that has been provided by the applicant. They're showing the 15 feet wide here. It's on the very west-hand side of the development. Then with, as called out here with the brown, kind of meandering through there, is the proposed trail that I spoke about, spoke about earlier. That's a requirement as found in the city's master park plan and then also talked about in the city's comprehensive plan as well. And then the blue, blue area is just the existing Moonlight Road surface area where you would drive on at this particular time. And then going back and finishing in the upper left-hand corner, the northwest portion, but outside the application area, is the existing building that was developed on that particular lot, number one, of the Moonlight Business Center Number Three subdivision back in 2004. What is proposed is an 84-unit duplex development. 42 lots are planned and then a tract A. So, whatever you see here that is not enumerated as a lot, lots one through 42 would be that tract A. And the applicant has designated that for open space for the residents. The applicant has, at this junction with this particular development, they're envisioning these units to be used, the rental units, but they did mention to us in the pre-application meeting of a potential desire to turn these into like, a fee, a fee, simple ownership where each lot or each unit would be owned individually. And so, we encourage them, if they wanted to do that at some point in time, maybe make some plans or preparations for that at this stage, so therefore, lay in the groundwork for that easier transition at a later date, if that would occur and if that, if that occur, when that would occur. We don't really know. Four feet sidewalks are planned for both sides of Creekside Drive and Stone Creek Drive and the south side of Woodson Lane. They're not, they're shown on here, but they're not colored or anything like that, but they are there. And that's required through the subdivision regulations. Then the, the plan, as I mentioned earlier, calls for the 10 feet wide trail, which is shown highlighted here in brown. The applicant has provided for that on the, on the plans that have been submitted. A lot of the infrastructure has already been provided through the previous development. They would include water, which is fire hydrant improvements, sewer, including the lift station, which is proposed north of Lot Number 39. Drainage improvements, which is, we saw earlier from that, that concrete flume runs through the development. Roads, and then the thing that's really lacking, I guess, would be streetlights, but they have shown streetlights as an improvement that they would make in the future. One of the key items that the city has followed is that we're giving the developer the option to either supply a maintenance agreement for water lines, sewer lines, and driveways, or provide easements to the city with the ability to perform maintenance on city water and sewer main lines. We feel this is important, especially if the development goes away from rental and towards the, the individual ownership of lots and units, that those future owners would have the ability to do maintenance on other lines or on their own line, but they would run across other properties. And the last thing of note, and it's shown on here, I don't know if you can see it, just below where it says existing building, where it's called out in red, there's a little bit of a notch, kind of where the trail starts, there's a little bit of a notch between the existing Moonlight Road right-of-way, which is 50 feet wide, and then there's an extra 10 feet, and that's been provided by the applicant through the drawings here to meet that standard of road improvement for Moonlight Road, which would be 60 feet on the east half. So, they have planned for that. So, that brings us to staff recommendation. Staff recommends the Planning Commission forward the request for an 84-unit duplex preliminary development plan, PDP-15-03, of 22.01 acres, consisting of lots two through 11 of the Moonlight Business Center Three subdivision, located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Moonlight Road and Woodson Lane, for approval, subject to the following conditions. There's five of them. I'll read through them here. Number one, construction of four feet wide concrete sidewalks shall be completed along both sides of Creekside Drive and Stone Creek Drive, as well as along the entire frontage of the south side of Woodson Lane. Number two, revise the preliminary development plan to delete the words "future" where it appears above the wording "10 feet asphalt trail" and delete the wording "by others" where it appears beneath the wording "10 feet asphalt trail," with the understanding the trail will be built by the applicant developer. Continuing on, number three, revise the preliminary development plan to include a four-feet-wide pedestrian connection path somewhere in the southern portion of the development, westerly to the 10-feet-wide trail running along South Moonlight Road. That's mainly for connectivity and just ease for those residents that would be in the southwest and the center part of the development, that they would be able to get over to the trail without having to use the sidewalk system going north and then going over to the trail and then back south. Because one thing that's been in discussion by the city, there's been planning meetings held for future development on the south side of the interstate. There's been some various meetings this year conducted, and we believe that would occur at some point in time. We don't know when, of course. And this way, the trail and then the connection to the trail would give residents the ability to go over the interchange into the, would then be the south part of the city. Number four, which is kind of long, the applicant, this has to do with the maintenance agreement, the applicant shall submit a perpetual private maintenance agreement, acceptable to the city, which assigns maintenance responsibility to the owners of each individual unit and access easements across the properties for water lines, sewer lines, and for driveways. This agreement shall be executed and filed with Johnson County Register of Deeds prior to issuance of building permits. If an acceptable agreement is not submitted, each unit shall have a separate service line connected directly to the public main line. This includes the sanitary sewer system, where each unit would then need to be connected to a city sanitary main line and then provide sanitary sewer easement for the city to be able to perform maintenance on these main lines. And then the last one is number five. This is per Gardner Energy. Revise the preliminary development plan to include existing electrical power boxes. There's, there's six power boxes that are on the development currently, but they have not been shown as of date, to date, on any of the drawings submitted. So, this is something where we would like them to revise, to show those actual power boxes. I think they're mainly on the west side of the development and then along the, the south side of the development. And that would conclude the presentation, unless you have any questions for staff.
I think what we might do, Chad, is go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we'll address any questions after that.
Okay, yeah, the applicant is here, if they have anything to state or present.
Great.
All right.
We'll go ahead and now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals are allotted three minutes, or an individual representing their group is allotted seven minutes, and I am not going to be stringent on the time allowances.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Planning Commission. My name is Curtis Holland. I'm an attorney with the Holsonelli Law Firm. For the record, my address is 6201 College Boulevard, Suite 500, Overland Park, Kansas. Thank you for hearing our application. I am happy to be here. I would like to introduce one of my clients tonight, Rick Trumbull, who is here. And Rick is our proposed developer of the project. Landmark Development is, if we're successful in moving this application forward and getting ultimate approval, would purchase the property from my other client, and that is the current owner of the property today, which is Gardner Bank. And I'll explain that in a little bit. And then I also want to introduce Jim Wong, who's with Allen Brandon Drew's Engineering. Jim, his company prepared the plans that were analyzed by staff and the report. Would appreciate, or at least say thank you to staff. We had met with them a couple of times on this project. They really helped guide us to the point where we are tonight in presenting the plans to you. And so, thank you, staff, for your help and guidance in that regard. Staff did a great job laying it all out for you. The staff report is very, very thorough, gave you some of the history. I, I won't take seven minutes. Hopefully, I won't take just about a couple. I did want to just tell you the couple little background facts with regard to the case. And as I mentioned before, Gardner Bank now owns the property. They didn't always own the property, they just, they used to have a loan on the property. And, and a few years ago, we had tried to bring back a different development that was presented to the Planning Commission and then to the City Council and ultimately was denied, but that was for an apartment project, a medium-density, much denser project than what we're presenting to you tonight. But that was back in 2008. And following that denial, if you will, the then landowner, who had a loan with Gardner Bank, was no longer paying under the loan and ultimately deeded the, deeded the land back to the bank as a, as a result of that. So, Gardner Banks really owned the property for about the last seven or eight years and would love to be able to sell the property to Mr. Trumbull and would like this land to ultimately be developed. We think that the proposal tonight before you is a good one. We think it's consistent with your comprehensive land use plan, as staff has pointed out, with the goals and policies of the, of the city's comprehensive plan. The residential makes sense here. It's where it's located in terms of the surrounding area and again, with the, in performance with the city's plan. The park itself was zoned industrial way back in 1997. I don't know how much history you knew about that, but the reason this particular piece was zoned back, back in that day for industrials, there was a thought nor hope that there would be an interchange here, and it didn't happen, unfortunately. And as a result, the park just sat, after spending really millions of dollars to build it, put in the roads and sewers and the infrastructure, water, and all of that's there. It's just been sitting there, really, undeveloped. It's not helping the city, it's not helping my client, the bank. And so, we're really fortunate that Mr. Trumbull came along and saw the land and saw opportunity here to bring it, bring something nice to the city and finally to develop this little corner, this little point at the city that's just been kind of, frankly, just been sitting there. Hopefully, you all will agree with us and with staff's recommendation that it's appropriate to rezone the property to RP2 for a duplex project. The report pretty much lays out the reasons for the rezoning, and we're in support of that and agree with all of that. And with regard to the preliminary plan and so forth, it is a planned zoning district, so the city has some controls over the development, how it lays out. There were some, a couple of comments in the staff report with regard to maintenance of the access and the roads, as well as the utility lines, and of course, we'll work all of that out. We're trying to get through this process, and we'll eventually, if we're successful, spend time and money drafting agreements and send the city the drafts and so forth and have them review them. And I, I don't think that's going to be an issue at all. There were some revisions that were noted by staff that they would like to see made to the plan, couple of notes or revisions and changes and so forth, and we're in agreement with that. You know, there was a comment in the staff report about the bike hike trail. We've since had conversations, further conversations, and we're in agreement with, with doing that and building the, building the trail with this project. So, we're going to bring a bike hike trail, even though it doesn't quite go all over the city yet, we'll at least build that part of it that's adjacent to our property and let the rest of the folks build out the rest of it when, when they're ready. Sidewalks, you know, we've really covered all of the development issues in the plan itself. If you have any questions about that, Jim's here to answer anything like that, engineering-wise or otherwise. And Rick's here, if you need to ask him any questions about what he plans to do and what his hopes are for the project. But again, all that's been spelled out in the staff report and in our application, so. But we did want to say thank you for giving us the time to come before you and ask for your consideration and hopefully, recommendation for approval of both the rezoning and the preliminary plan. With that, I would close and take any questions myself or anybody on our team. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now that we have the applicant up here with us, now's a good time for any questions any of the commissioners might have for the applicant.
Thank you.
Here's, we're good for now. Thank you. Are there any others wishing to speak this evening?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Lovella with a second by Limmer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission discussion, anyone have additional comments, questions for staff, or perhaps something that may have came up later for the applicant?
More so for, I guess, point of clarification for myself. On the, the trail, is asphalt an acceptable material for that, or does it need to be concrete like the sidewalk regulations?
Commissioner Austin, I think the, looking at the park master plan, I think their design standards calls, can be asphalt, and then it has like, a certain amount of shoulder width in the design. In lieu of the trail or
In lieu of the trail or not, I guess in place of the trail, the requirement through the, through the zoning and then, well, I guess it's through the subdivision regulations would be for a five-foot concrete sidewalk because of the arterial classification of Moonlight Road, but I believe the park plan calls for the ten-foot asphalt.
Yes, I've got another question.
Please.
And this one actually may be for the, the applicant, and I wasn't quick enough, but, and maybe this goes to the final development, and so staff can correct me if I get in here too early, but the, the private drives that go to the multi-units, are those planned to be, I guess, what are the specifications on those? Are they normal, like road grade, twenty feet wide, big enough for a fire truck to drive on? Because some of these drives are pretty long to get back to some of those houses.
Do you want to come up there and talk?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
You're talking about the, the roads themselves, the ones that are already there, or the new driveway?
Yeah, the new, new private drives shown on, the one that says Street One of Three?
You're talking about?
Getting to the individual residents, this is all these ones.
Yeah, so like that one's three hundred and sixty feet long.
Those are, they're just concrete drives, they're eighteen feet wide, just like a standard driveway. So they're not intended to be a road, and all there is is the driveway.
I guess a question for staff, the fire department has input on layout.
Commissioner Austin, I think if I remember right from the actual scale, width of the proposed drive areas or driveways, I think they're at least eighteen feet in width. I think the fire department, I don't remember any specific comments from the fire department as far as the width. I think I do remember something from Public Works, that I think on some of the earlier drawings, they were a little bit narrower, they're like sixteen or fourteen or something like that, so the applicant widened them to get to at least the eighteen. As far as whether that's adequate for certain types of, you know, fire apparatus, trucks, that, that I don't know for certain.
I'm going to just jump in here. At the final development phase, we can make sure to focus fire department to get those questions answered, and that, that's a pretty minor change. I mean, we see minor changes like that from the preliminary to the final development plan. So we'll make sure that, that they provide us with comments on the, on the final, and if they need to be a little wider, or they need to be a little more heavy-duty, or something to address them, we will make sure that, that that's taken care of then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There aren't any, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I move that we forward this on to council with, what are we doing here? With recommendation for approval, subject to conditions one through five.
Second.
We have a motion made by Lovella with a second by Austin, that the planning commission forward the request to, I'm assuming both, rezone and approve, correct guys? The, yes, rezone the twenty-two point oh-one acres for properties located at eight-two-zero, eight-seven-zero, eight-nine-zero, eight-six-one, eight-four-one, and eight-one-one South Creekside Drive, and eight-hundred-eight-four-zero, eight-four-one, eight-eleven South Stone Creek Drive from M-one Restricted Industrial District to RP two Plan Two Family District and the associated preliminary development plan, PDP dash one-five-dash-zero-three for Moonlight Park, to the governing body with a recommendation for approval based on the findings of facts outlined in the staff report and subject to the following conditions, one through five.
I have a reading.
We already had a second, Sherry.
Oh, sorry.
So we had a motion made by Lovella with a second by Austin, but thanks for piping in. So with that, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on, new business item number two. Consider initiation of a tax amendment to Chapter eighteen zoning of the Gardner Municipal Code regarding cargo container facilities, freight terminals, rail or truck, and other similar uses. Michelle, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Michelle Loniger, Principal Planner. What this is before you tonight is that staff is asking the planning commission to initiate a tax amendment regarding cargo container facilities, freight terminals, and other similar uses. You're smiling, you know where this comes from. Discussions over the past couple of months regarding a rezoning application, classification of uses, of similar uses. What we'd like to go in here and do is really clean it out, clarify. It seems that based on the definition of cargo container facilities, many, many, many uses would fall under that definition, whether they're what you really think of as a cargo container facility, like J.B. Hunt out by the Intermodal, or what you had brought before you as part of a rezoning, you know, whether it's just overnight storage of a few trucks and trailers, things like that. We really want to be able to look at these uses. We don't have a definition for freight terminals, and we want to really be able to kind of clean that out initially before the new code comes into play, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and not lump everything under one use, even though it may be similar, it wouldn't have the same impact, or whatever way we may find. This is just the beginning of the process, this allows staff to look at it. We've just done some very initial preliminary review of other communities and requested some information from American Planning Association. So what staff is recommending is that the planning commission initiate a tax amendment to Chapter eighteen zoning of the Gardner Municipal Code regarding cargo container facilities and freight terminals, rail or truck, and other similar uses. We would anticipate bringing this back to you October, November. It would be a public hearing process through the planning commission where the commission would form a recommendation and then send that to the governing body for an action.
Seems pretty straightforward, but I know you're there for any questions, Michelle.
We need a motion.
Yep. Yep, we need a motion, we don't have any questions.
I move that we initiate a tax amendment to the Chapter eighteen zoning of the Gardner Municipal Code regarding cargo container facilities, freight terminals, rail or truck, and other similar uses.
Second.
The motion made by Lovella with a second by Freeman, that the planning commission initiate tax amendments to the Chapter eighteen zoning of the Gardner Municipal Code regarding cargo container facilities, freight terminals, rail or truck, and other similar uses. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you. Okay. Being done with new business, other business. Michelle, number one, land development code rewrite update. I assume that's why you're still there.
Well, I'm still here. We are moving forward with this process. We are working with our consultant to, for them to provide us what we're calling discussion papers. They've been called white papers, they've been called a couple different things. We're calling them discussion papers. The advisory committee met last week and looked, excuse me, a draft of four of the six discussion papers. We've made some revisions based on that discussion, and we do have, I would say, final drafts of four of those ready to go. We are, we should have drafts of the next two next week, and so we're moving forward with, with those. We will be having a public meeting to discuss all of those papers mid-October. It'll be actually October twentieth here at City Hall at six-thirty, and we'll have small groups, and everybody will be able to go and listen and learn and talk about each of the discussion papers and be able to give some feedback and direction. Really what these discussion papers are is they give a background of what the topic is, what our comprehensive plan says about the topic, what our code currently says about the topic, and some ideas of directions we can go regarding the topic based on the comprehensive plan. It also gives some resources and some picture examples. They're, they're meant to be broad, they're meant to be more informational, to be able to ask questions and to have discussions about the topic. It's not going to be any code language. Our consultants are charged with drafting the code, it's not the public's charge with drafting the code, it's the public's charge to give us direction as to what you want and what you don't want. So that's where we are in the process for the code rewrite.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Other business item number two.
We will be doing, we, the only potential item we have for the October meeting, our deadline was last week, we did not get any new applications in. The only potential item would be the tax amendment. And for those of you that have been here for previous falls, we do an annual planning commission training. We're looking at doing that in October, and we are looking for any input topics, anything you'd like to discuss, anything you'd like to learn more about. I have a short list of things I would like to discuss, we'll do a brief overview, we'll talk about, we always give you a refresher on the legal aspects of your discussions and decisions, and the planning commission, the bylaws and such, but if there's, if there's anything specific you'd like to talk about, anything specific you'd like more information on, we can definitely incorporate that. The training isn't meant to be an annual regurgitation of the bylaws. We want it to be beneficial and learning for everybody. So if there's anything that you would like to learn more about, we did send out some information on spot zoning, we can definitely talk more about that, and we'll help to have our attorneys' input with that, too. So if there's anything you want to mention tonight, or you want to send me an email, please, we, we want this to be helpful for everybody.
Anyone have anything for Michelle this evening? Okay, feel free to send her an email with any topic suggestions.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Seeing that we have no other business items on the agenda and no other discussion needed, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Lovella, I'll second by Limmer, because he was out of my good ear. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned.